Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Concord Planning Board on Tuesday, December 19th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. The Planning Board is convening this meeting by video conference using the Zoom application. The meeting will be recorded for future on-demand viewing. I'd like to welcome everyone attending this meeting and take attendance of members. Rob Almeida.
Yeah.
Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Abby Flanagan. Yes, perhaps she'll join later. Sue Felshen. As well, Mark Giddings.
Yeah.
And myself, Linda Miller, I'm here. We also have with us a town planner, Elizabeth Hughes. I'll briefly review our meeting procedures. Each vote will be conducted by roll call. There will be public participation during certain portions of the meeting. Those participating remotely wishing to make a statement or ask a question during a public participation period should use the Zoom raised hand function or star nine on a phone and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you may unmute yourself in Zoom or use a star six from a phone and then speak. When you speak, please address the chair, identify yourself by name, address, and any relevant affiliations, and speak clearly for the meeting record. Comments during public participation are limited to three minutes or less, except for extenuating circumstances such as for those with disabilities, and are requested to be respectful. Answers to questions unless very brief and fact-based will be deferred for follow-up at future meetings. The Board welcomes written comments at any time instead of or in addition to those made during the public during public participation. And I see that Sue Felshen has joined us in the interim. Sue, could you say yes, so we'll have you in the roll call?
Yes, here.
Thank you. So now we'll go to the first item on the agenda. And I will turn this over to Elizabeth to talk about the discussion of MBTA communities, site plan rules, and regulations.
Thank you. It's one of the elements that the guidelines that have been issued in the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities does allow for communities who do adopt MBTA community zoning to also require site plan approval as part of that zoning process. And we submitted an application to Mass Housing Partnership for technical assistance. And on the meeting tonight with us is Emily, is it Ennis?
Ennis.
Ennis. From Ennis Associates, and she is going to be helping the Board develop site plan rules and regs specific to the MBTA community zoning that the Board is drafted. And hopefully, you'll be submitting shortly. So Emily, I'll just turn it straight over to you.
Thank you very much, with your permission, Madam Chair. First of all, my name, as Elizabeth said, is Emily Ennis. I'm the president of Ennis Associates. We are a planning and urban design firm based in Newburyport. I've been doing a lot of work on the MBTA communities recently. I'm really excited to be helping you with the site plan rules and regs. And we've been, Elizabeth and I have been going back and forth on some documents, but this is really the kickoff meeting with you. And I was looking forward to, based on your time and your agenda, but maybe hearing a little bit from you about how you all have been working with site plan regs, what you have, what your experience has been in terms of things that can be changed or that you would like to see changed. Obviously, I'm also reviewing them in terms of how they comply with the MBTA Communities Act and also general best practices on site plan regs. So that's why I'm here today, looking very much forward to working with you through the balance of this project.
Okay. Don't. Not sure we were prepared for something so broad, so I'll try and, I'll try and kick it off. So the, the Town of Concord in its site plan rules and regs, I mean, in its zoning bylaw, has a site plan review. And as part of that site plan review, there's very specific criteria that the Board, and whether it's this Board is the permit granting authority when it is just the site plan review, or whether it's the Planning Board making a recommendation to the Board of Appeals when there's site plan review combined with a special permit. The Board goes through each one of those criteria. I think it's A through N now, no, A through H, and specifically addresses that criteria as they move through forward in reviewing proposals and how the proposal meets those criteria. The, even though the, the bylaw itself says the Board will develop rules and regs, that has, that has never been done. And as I explained to Emily, I think it was probably three and a half years ago, I attempted to kick off developing comprehensive site plan rules and regs with all the different town departments and staff that would be involved. The Planning Board's well aware, they get comment letters from eight to nine different departments and division staff in reviewing site plans. And it was, it was, it was it was very challenging and it just, with all the other priorities, it just kind of kept getting pushed to the back burner. So when this opportunity came along, kind of taking a smaller bite by being able to develop site plan rules and regs that are specific to MBTA community zoning, I'm hopeful will be a catalyst to be able to develop much larger site plan rules and regs that deal with not just multifamily housing, but we can develop into site plan rules and regs that would also govern commercial projects. So.
And apologies, I should have been more specific, your experience with the site plan review. Not, I didn't mean to imply that there was another document out there, so apologies for that.
And Linda, I'll just note that Abby Flanagan just joined the meeting, so. Abby, if you want to just turn your mic on and.
My, my apologies, I've got one with an ear infection, one with pink eye, and one with something else. So bedtime was a little, little slow this evening, so I'm here now.
Well, I don't know, Emily, if you want, like, individual members just to give you their thoughts on projects. The Board's currently going through a site plan review for a fairly significant redevelopment project, so. But it's, it is commercial. Whether you want them to focus, they, they have recently provided recommendations in the last, I think, year on a planned residential project that didn't include multifamily, so.
Much. Yeah, happy to, maybe I can give a little bit more color to the introduction as well. So the EOHLC did develop the sample zoning, actually helped them out with that. And within that is a section that allows for criteria for site plan review. And it covers, as you would anticipate, most of the things that are required for site plan review. So thinking about circulation, access, siting of the building, how the building relates to other buildings and other components on the site, how the site relates to the overall pedestrian and street network, stormwater management, and a couple of other things. And so, you know, we'll be starting with that as our criteria, as well as your own zoning, your own site plan review process. I guess what I'm looking to hear from you is, and, and I have had a look at a couple of the recent decisions, is what, what type of criteria would be helpful for you? How do you see, or how have you seen the process in the past? What have you regretted not having more specificity in terms of the ease of discussion with, you know, within your own group as the Planning Board, with applicants, with members of the public who maybe don't understand how site plan review works? So just looking for those tools in your experience that you would find to be helpful and that we can incorporate that as part of our review and recommendations. And yes, if you wanted to go one by one, or, or all jump in at once, either of that's fine.
I, I guess one question I have is sort of, it seems like some communities have distinctions between major and minor degrees. We don't, and I just wondered, would the MBTA communities lend itself to having that distinction? Obviously, we are providing zoning for lots of development. And so the question would be, what the capacity of the Board? Should some of this be really handled more administratively? And should there be categories that you would recommend that, that we might use to facilitate processing any applications?
I think that's a great question. In general, I like administrative review or a minor review where you can, just because planning boards get very busy and allowing any planning board to focus on those developments that have perhaps a greater impact. And then administrative review or a minor site plan review for those with less of, less of an impact, I think works out really well in terms of workflow. I have developed and I can show you a checklist that I created for the city of Pittsfield for its downtown creative district, which allows administrative review of projects under certain thresholds. And I think that's the discussion we would have, is how do you define that major and minor review? I can also obviously show you examples from other communities. So sometimes it's the number of square feet, sometimes, you know, of building square footage, sometimes it's the number of units, which of course is particularly appropriate for the MBTA Communities Act. So, you know, I think that's a great conversation to have. And, you know, I'd be happy to talk through that further.
Great.
I always feel that sustainability is still playing catch up with respect to planning aspects that have been on people's radar screens for far, far longer. And I, I really don't know how to fit that into site plan review as opposed to other aspects. But I still think, you know, even when we think of it, it's, we mostly think of energy. And sometimes we think of stormwater, but we don't necessarily consider it sustainability. And there are many other aspects to it as well. So that's, take that as a very broad comment, please.
It is a very good comment, though, and I think there's a couple of factors that come into play with that for the MBTA Communities Act specifically. And it's why the idea that you might take this as a stepping stone to looking more broadly is so important. With the MBTA Communities Act, you can't require anything of the multifamily that is also not required of others. So it would be tricky to say, hey, multifamily, you've got to be sustainable for whatever that given level of sustainability is, but we're not asking it of anything else. However, that doesn't mean we can't put a placeholder that says, you know, as you go forward, this is how we think of it, and this is how we would apply it to elsewhere. I think in the meantime, though, you, you've mentioned two of the key issues. Stormwater management is already covered, certainly as part of the site plan requirement. So that's something where we can think about, what can we put in now that addresses sustainability? And then, as I said, leave room for additional components later. The other thing that becomes interesting, and I apologize, I should check before this conversation, but if you've adopted the Stretch Energy Code or the Specialized Stretch Energy Code, especially the second, there are a lot, my understanding and talking with some architects that I've been chatting with about this topic, there's a lot of sustainability built into the Specialized Stretch Energy Code that used to be covered in zoning as incentives. So if that's a direction you want to go in, then obviously I would delve into the existing building code requirements and what might no longer need to be incorporated into zoning. And then we can have a conversation of what you wanted to put into your site plan review standards.
So let me follow up with that, Emily. So the Town of Concord has, you know, adopted both.
Thought they might have, but I wasn't sure.
And we are also one of the 10 demonstration communities.
Right.
So. Not sure if HLC has factored that in to the mix, but I think I'd have to check with our Sustainability Director. I think we're, we're close to being able to move forward with that demonstration project. So I'm not sure how that would factor into rules and regs as well.
Stop, I'll, I'll make a note, I'm typing in notes as we talk. So I will make a note that we need to have a further conversation about that. And then if necessarily, we can always loop HLC and maybe not the first month after the Rapid Transit Committee applications are due, but we can certainly loop them into the conversation about that. So that's a great point, Sue, I'm glad you brought that up.
Another ques, another question I have is design standards or design, I mean, where does that fit in? Is that like we have West Concord and they have very detailed design requirements, but that's just West Concord. I don't know if that would be applicable to MBA, MBTA communities as any underlying conditions. And I, so I just don't know how, do we go down that road or not? What?
So the conversation that I had with HLC as we were developing the sample zoning was to put the development standards in the zoning, the quantifiable, measurable, you can tick a box and say this has either been met or it has not been met into the zoning itself. And then design guidelines that maybe cover architectural style, site design components as to, as opposed to, which, it's tricky because that can go into the site plan review, the, the development standards as well. But there's kind of an added level with the design guidelines. But anything that's basically advisory as a separate design guidelines document. Again, you have to be careful that the guidelines that are being applied to multifamily are not so onerous as to be prohibitive. The outrageous example I use is you can't ask the multifamily developments to cover their buildings with a thin sheet of gold, right? It's super expensive, it's not applicable to anything else in the, the area. The more standard one and more reasonable perhaps, and this goes back to the sustainability as well, is you can't require, for example, that multifamily provide 100% solar, but everybody else has to be solar ready, right? You're putting an additional burden on the multifamily. But you could certainly say that everybody should be solar ready, right? That's, that's something across the board. So I think we can, so my recommendation was put the quantifiable components into the zoning, tie that obviously to your site plan review. And then let's think about if you want to do design standards, that they are a standalone advisory document and the site plan review requirements can point to those. And there's language in the sample zoning that would allow you to do that. So you would essentially adopt the zoning as the town normally adopts the zoning. And then the design guidelines as an advisory document is something that the Planning Board could adopt on their own.
Well, building on what Linda said, the West Concord Design Guidelines are for the commercial downtown section, so it doesn't apply really exactly to residential buildings, or at least it's not targeted that way. And some of it is about, for example, architectural style. But some of it is about trying to make the area more human oriented and less car oriented. For example, of suitable use of a front yard of a building and what that might do to change the requirements for allowed setbacks. And that, it seems, has some bearing. Obviously, there are hard setbacks written into our proposed bylaw, but we could have, I don't know, would it come under site plan review to say the setback could be smaller if you provided these more human-centric elements? Or would that not come under site plan review?
You could, you could do that under site plan review. Essentially, you are setting up a process of establishing a variation on your requirements. And say, you know, your site plan, your setback is X, but if you provide this, it's actually Y. So you could do that within site plan review. You could talk about, you know, if you're talking about the relationship of buildings with each other in terms of design rather than in terms of setback and number of stories and all that, that could go into the design guidelines. So for example, if you wanted to talk about the fact that there are strong horizontal, say, say some of your multifamily is in a, is sort of an area that's having more historic characteristics in it, you could say something like in the design guidelines that you want the buildings to express the strong horizontal components found in the existing historic context or that the pattern of windows be complementary to the existing historic. That's more of a design guideline. A design standard would be, say you had a mixed-use building, just because it's easier that you want the ground floor to have a minimum transparency requirement of 60 to 70% and the upper floors to have 30 to 40%. So that second one is quantifiable, you can measure it, you can take it off, belongs into the, the development standards. The first one, the strong horizontal element or picking up components of the architectural features, that's more of a design guideline, and that's how we do that. And I think to your point, something that is commercially focused now or mixed-use focused, it's going to be a little bit harder, there's a lot of transparency requirements, storefront organization that wouldn't be applicable to a straight multifamily. So if you want to do the design guidelines, we'd certainly want to talk about how those would fit in and what would be appropriate for multifamily in the various areas of town.
What about parking in the sense of, it's a perennial problem, where do you put the cars? If you put them in back, there's more asphalt. If you put them in front, then it's car-centric, not human-centric. If you put them underneath, then it's very expensive and the building gets taller. And do you see any place for anything about that in site plan review? Or is that not either applicable or possible?
So I see that in site plan review. When I think about the setbacks, I divide them into the front and rear, which everybody does. But when I think about the side setback, I divided into three, right? There's the front side setback, there's the side-side setback, and then there's the rear side setback. And so I think of different uses being allowable in each of those setbacks. Again, we can think, so you know, I would allow rear setback, yes, you can put parking in the rear setback, in the rear side setback, maybe the side-side setback allows for access. Maybe you don't want any parking in the front setback or the front side setback. Maybe a parking or a drop-off area or something in either the front or the front side is allowable. So we can think through what makes sense in the, in the different areas and how to memorialize that. Yeah, parking is a perennial problem. And generally, it's best practice not to allow it between the principal building and the street. But there are sometimes good reasons to do that, you know, and, and allowing the ability to do drop-offs. Thinking about how people live today and, you know, there's, there's deliveries. So how do we think not about just the car access, but the FedEx access, the UPS access and so forth and so on? All of that really falls into access and circulation, and so that would apply to site plan review. Those components, again, can't make it too onerous. So there's going to be a balance there, but certainly governing what goes where would be appropriate.
And in terms of the multifamily, how should we think about the all-time, the open space, particularly the family orientation? You know, how we don't have anything in the zoning that we've written with requirements for any kind of place scape or open area or agricultural uses or anything that, that might be a possibility that I think people would enjoy? We don't have any of that requirement in the underlying zoning either. So how do you treat things like how prescriptive can we be?
So again, we're going to have to be thinking about what the division is between what's required and what's, what's more of a guideline. So on the required, it's going to be where is open space compared to the other components of the site? How is it accessed? How is it treated as, is your stormwater, on-site stormwater management part of that open space? Is it not part of that open space? How do you access it? I think, you know, we could talk a little bit about what's private and what's public and how each is accessed. If you think of circulation, obviously, any private open space should be accessible to the residents, but not to the members of the public. So that's going to come under circulation, so we can think about that. And then were you to do design guidelines, I think you could then talk about different types of open space. Is it hardscaped, is it landscaped, is it a combination of the two? Is there a play area? Are, actually, you could do fencing in the site in the development standards. So it's a play area, then it must have a certain sort of fencing or a certain location of the fencing. How high, is it visible, can you see through it, can you not see through it? Things like that could be part of the development standards. Whereas, you know, if the materials, for example, might be part of the design guidelines, you might say, we're prohibiting this type of material or we're encouraging. Design guidelines are a little bit easier if you think of encourage, discourage. I know one of my other colleagues at another firm has done some really nice work with encourage, discourage, and it's, it's a nice model to follow, so. We could look at that.
I guess I, I would ask, you know, sort of what your recommendation is in terms of how we look at all of these elements as well as getting community feedback, which I think this is real, really what people get interested in, in terms of they want to know if the height is going to have shadows and.
Right.
You know, so, so how do, how do you proceed to have this discussion more broadly than just with the Planning Board?
Well, I wanted to kick it off with you all, just to make sure that I captured of my thinking, anything specific that you had run into that was either you really wanted it or you'd run into problems with it and would have liked a wider definition. I think the next step, obviously, talking with Elizabeth about the draft that she started, she gave me some precedents, I have some other precedents, so pulling those together. And then I would like, I think, a community meeting. I don't want the site plan regs to get into the way of what you're doing in terms of the zoning itself. But as you say, people are going to want to know, well, what does this mean? What does it look like? How is it going to be approved? And so it shouldn't follow along too far behind, if you know what I mean. So I think our, our next step is confirming the schedule for the rollout of the, the zoning and that hearing process, and then tying the site site plan standards right behind that, your rules and regs right behind that. So people can say, focus first on the zoning and then focus on that, and then have a community meeting. We've done it in a couple of different ways. Obviously, you're doing Zoom now. We've done hybrid meetings, we've done solely in-person and solely Zoom meetings. We've also done surveys that say, take the content of the meeting and push it out so people can work with it and think about it. so people can um work with it and think about it in their own time and give us results. So um I'm uh flexible on how we do that or what combination uh we do, you know, within reason, not twelve meetings. Uh I've also had some great success recently with having two meetings back to back on the same day, in person meetings, so that we're capturing people at different times. So I think having perhaps, um you know, that's also a possibility, like a three to five and a six to eight or a six to, yeah, six to eight. Something like that can work out really well. And then the content would be an explanation, obviously, of um what it means to have site plan regs, um how they work, what site plan review is, how it works, um how the two of them work together. You know, how that relates to the MBTA Communities Act. And then maybe giving some pieces of people um some choices to think about. So for example, I noticed that you did dark sky lighting in one of your recent um uh um decisions. Kudos to you, first of all. That's something that uh we like here at Dennis Associates. But that's a great thing, because there's a measurable standard that you can put towards that. So you know, that's been important to people. That's something where we can demonstrate, okay, this is how the standards work. And then we can take, actually, we, if people are already familiar with the the West Concord um uh design guidelines, then it's a great way of saying, these are what design guidelines are. Those, these are how something like that can work with MBTA Communities Act. And then maybe capturing some um ideas people have about uh architectural styles or how design would work. Uh you know, I liked that idea of what's public space, what's private space? How do you distinguish them? How do you design them? What are the components? So there might be some um good uh almost visual preference studies uh that could come in there. And you know, that's helpful for you, that's helpful for applicants coming in because they know what the community likes and doesn't like. That's, that's one of the reasons I've always liked design guidelines, is I think it makes the conversation easier to have. And as long as we put in something that allows for alternative compliance, if something just doesn't work for a particular site, um for preserve that flexibility. I think they can be a powerful tool for community discussion um and uh for your own work as a planning board.
So on lighting, that would be one of those places where you would use this nice word encourage, like encourage dark skies and encourage no light spillage off the property? Since we don't have that currently in our residential zoning?
Yeah, I mean, we could, I can talk with HLC about it. I think that's a standard, you know, not, not having light spillage, not having light glare, um uh reducing uplighting. You know, those are standard components, I think, of um uh site plan review standards. And they don't have to be, that doesn't necessarily have to be onerous, right? It's about redirecting the light, it's using the light, right? Light fixtures, that doesn't necessarily mean the fixtures are more expensive. Um it's just about that. So I think that could probably fit into the um the standards, the development standards themselves. And then the design guidelines will be more about, we would like uh um uh historic light. We would like a contemporary light. We would like the, these other components that that really fits into more of the design standard or the design guideline, sorry.
I guess the question is, in my mind, we don't have, other than dimensional requirements, we don't really have a lot of requirements. We don't have requirements in ours, in the zoning itself, as, as is now proposed.
Alright.
Yeah. Do you think that um what you know of HLC that we were being a little too conservative? And that we could, could push for more to be in the zoning?
Hmm, that's a good question. Um you've just got the diso- dimensional standards at the moment. I don't think I've seen the most recent draft. So you've just got the dimensional standard, so height setbacks, et cetera. You're not actually putting development standards into the zoning itself. Okay.
Is that correct, Elizabeth?
Yeah. Okay. How are you referring to site plan review in the MBTA zoning? Are you just pointing it to a particular uh the, to the appropriate section of your current bylaws?
Um I can, I can, I can bring it up if you want.
Yeah, perfect. Nothing like reviewing zoning on the fly.
Not, not my favorite. Um so, current, um so currently, the zoning, um we'll talk about the parking requirements.
Great.
And um then spells out the districts. But um just three definitions, because um in talking with town council, uh we do actually have a lot of the definitions already in the zoning bylaw.
Terrific.
And then it goes through each of the five sub-districts, provides those dimensional requirements.
Mm hmm.
And so one, two, three, four, five. Um we get into our affordability requirement, um which we will be um doing the um economic feasibility analysis.
Great.
And then this section, which is site plan review, talks about the board adopting regulations.
Okay.
And that, you know, in compliance with the guidelines to promote the objectives, objectives of this section, seven eleven and eleven eight, which is our site plan review criteria.
Okay, perfect. So I am seeing that you have a lot of the keywords in there. So site layout, building design, outdoor amenity spaces, which we already talked about. Um you've got vehicular access and circulation on site. Um the only thing I might have added was pedestrian access as well, but I think we can work with that. Uh architectural design of a building, site design and layout, that's great. Lighting and screening for adjacent properties, so um.
We do say reasonably conditioned matters such as. So I read that allowing for unmentioned matters as long as they are reasonably similar to the list given.
Yeah, right, no, and I, and I agree. So it's just sometimes it can be nice to um spell things out because they're important to you. So um let's see. And again, that, that same sort of thing is I might have just mentioned. Yeah, I mean, you have site design, which would include stormwater management. But again, if there's something particular that's important to you, I would put it in there um just so that there's no question that you're going to be able to address it. But um it's just something to think about. Um but this is, I think this gives us that um sort of the guidance and the flexibilities to create the site plan rules and regs um to address these. And as you say, the other ones that are um uh the matters such as that are missing but related.
So um Emily, and let me ask, do you also think um putting in the word sustainability is? Um I'm, I'm reluctant to put something in here that raises a red flag to HLC.
Understood, yeah. Um, yeah. Um you've got site design and layout, you put in stormwater management. Uh you've got lighting there, which are a lot of the sustainability components. The vehi- uh vehicular pedestrian access and circulation. You know, there are pieces within that that we can think about um how we incorporate sustainable design into the rules and regs. And then it's just the careful eye on what trips into something that's more onerous for multifamily versus, and what could be designed rather than requirement. So that might be something else, is uh we sit there and say, okay, if we make this a development standard, it is onerous. If we make it an advisory guideline, then um that may be more acceptable at this stage. But with this, I very much think you're on the right track, so. Other questions or concerns? I really wanted tonight to be sort of a, a resource for you at the kickoff of this process. And then obviously, we'll start talking more as we um delve into making this more, not to have a pun on it, but concrete. So if there is nothing else, and Elizabeth, I think my next step is to circle back with you um and start working out the schedule for uh when we have um our next discussion with, with the members of the planning board here, but also the public components of this discussion, so.
Well, I can um tell you, um this is what, so the planning board has their public hearing for annual town meeting zoning bylaw warrant articles, um March twelfth.
Okay, great.
With a snow date of March thirteenth. The, the the issue will be, um let me, let me ask you, how far after the twelfth do you think having a public, you know, a community engagement, you know, forum, whatever format may take? Because right now, um it's very, very difficult to find any available space because of the public hearings. Um we do not hold any other meetings um on nights where there is a public hearing for annual town meeting. Um so we're kind of looking towards like uh one, two, three weeks after that, the twenty seventh of March would be kind of the first open date.
Okay, well, let me pull up my schedule, since we're talking schedule, let me pull up my schedule.
Currently, all I'm aware of is an HDC meeting that night.
I am open on the twenty seventh of March.
So does, does that sound like a, for the board and for you, a reasonable timeframe?
I think it's fine for me. Um and that would have, mean that we are going to have that meeting before we have, uh before you get to town meeting. So people already know that it's in the works. It won't be finalized necessarily, but it's in the, because I think, Elizabeth, when we talked, we were going to have it um be after, we have it finalized after a town meeting in case they changed everything, but as close to possible as it could be. So um
Our town meetings not to, um is the last, um last three days of April, the twenty ninth.
I thought it was an April one, yeah, I thought I had that on my calendar already. So um yeah, I think March twenty seventh is fine, though.
Does that
I'm gonna book you in.
Um and then we, we can talk about different public engagement options and the board can figure out um what they think would work best.
I think there's also an opportunity to use your hearings, um uh your hearing as a way of publicizing this as well, so. Because we can ask people who have question, you know, people raise their hand and have questions about the site plan review and how that works, then you can direct them to come to this meeting. So I think it's nice having, having it far enough afterwards. Um that works.
So the, the site plan rules and regulations um don't need to get um town meeting approval, is that correct?
Um correct, you would need, um you would be required to hold a public hearing.
Public hearing, so um but there's no reason we would approve that, would we approve them before town meeting? No.
Um
Or
I, I, I do not think you can um develop site plan rules and regs in, in the next four months.
Also, you'd be adopting them before town meeting adopted the zoning to which they refer.
Right.
So you'd probably want to wait until after town meeting says yes to formally adopt them.
Um so and another question with site plan review, um say an applicant come, comes before us, they want an approval.
Mm hmm.
We take a vote, is that usually a majority vote or two thirds?
I had to ask, I think it's a majority.
Look, I don't, I don't think it requires a super majority, no.
Yeah, I don't think it does, I, yeah, yeah, because special permits is a super majority.
But no, the adoption of any rules and regs would just be a majority.
Yeah.
It would be the same as subdivision, uh subdivision rules and regs. It, it just requires a majority vote of the board after a public hearing to adopt them.
No, no, I was um for approval of an applicant.
Yeah.
You would just make it a majority of the board.
I believe for a site plan review, it's majority of the board. It's not as high as a standard as a special permit, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And I think it's, it's important, um I think probably to delineate the difference between slight site plan review and special permits.
Yes.
And how would, how would you have that discussion? What do you see as the salient features, the differences?
So we, we, we talked about this as we were developing the, the sample zoning, and I, I hope we made it clear in that. Um site plan review, you can't deny the use. Um there, there are some very, very limited cir- uh circumstances in which you can deny a, a site plan um review or approval of a site plan review. Uh my understanding from the legal team that we talked to, because I'm not a lawyer, um was that uh it really was dependent on them just not meeting the requirements of the application, you know, not submitting information. But it's really about controlling the use and not um approving or denying the use. Uh that's where it differs with the special permit. The special permit, you can actually deny the use if it's not meeting the requirements of the special permit as a whole. So and that's why there's, there should be some flexibility in your site plan review. You can see an example of how we set that up in the uh, in the sample zoning. Um and it's for a situation in which a developer or applicant rather comes to you with a project that there's, there's something unusual about it uh that makes it uh difficult to meet, you know? For example, for a site circulation, maybe there's a topographical, uh significant topographical change that makes your, however you've um set the requirements for circulation, won't work. That could be an example. Um uh so the, your reg should have enough flexibility to be able to deal with those situations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I guess with that, um we'll, uh we'll be aiming to talk to you again before the, uh although we, you know, um uh with respect to your schedule for the zoning. Uh but we'll talk to you again before March twenty seventh, and we'll be aiming for that for the public meeting to, to discuss this. So you'll, you'll see materials. Well, Elizabeth and I will work together to get you the materials before then, so, uh but that'll be what we aim for. And I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Yes. Um I suppose I should ask if there's public comment uh to anything, any input uh for Emily or for the board in terms of moving forward with site plan review? Uh no, then um we'll move on to administrative business. And I think the first issue here is just public comment, public comment, general public comment, limited up to fifteen minutes uh with no more than three minutes for anyone's speaker. And limited to items that are not on the agenda. So if uh you do have public comment, it could ask um anyone to raise their hand. Uh and if not, then uh we will move on to twenty twenty four town meeting warrant articles. And I'll turn that over to Elizabeth.
Um so we might as, uh we'll just pick up right where we left off. Um with, uh I did get um just a couple of comments back from town council um and a couple of comments back from um our copyright edit. our copyright editor, Sue, and sent out a, what I'm hoping is the final revised draft warrant article for the board and I'll just briefly go through. I highlighted the changes. The maximum density for area five just did not get filled in. So that was added in.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth, are you sharing your screen or?
No, I, well, yeah, I'm sharing my screen with myself.
Okay.
I'll share my screen with you.
Okay, thanks.
So the first thing was in sub district five, the maximum density. That column didn't get filled in from the last time. My apologies. And then in the affordability requirement, just consistency in the use of the word affordable units. And so that's just consistency purposes. And then Linda had raised this to me in an email and in my conversations with town council, talked about this section as far as imposing reasonable terms and conditions. And the sentence regarding approval may reasonably condition, you know, all of the items we just talked about. You know, as Emily was speaking, added pedestrian, added stormwater. And then town council also agreed that it was appropriate to put in the zoning bylaw that the board, and this should read the planning board. In the zoning bylaw specifically, the board means the zone, it means the board of appeals. So that the planning board may require a performance guarantee to ensure compliance with these conditions. And as I'm and I think that, that was it. Those were the final changes. Anybody have any questions or? Now remember, even, even if you vote that this is the final version and we submit this for the warrant. I'm going to say a, a warrant article that has this much detail. There, there may be something that after the public hearing, once again, those unintended consequences are something the board didn't think about. So there is always the potential to make some changes as part of your motion on the floor of town meeting if, if something didn't come up, but I don't know if I'm the only one that's nervous about this being the final version and actually submitting it to the warrant. But that's where I'm at.
Well, at some point we have to, we've got to submit something. So we can be as nervous as we like, but it has to go forward. Before we take our vote to place it on the warning warrant, I would like to say something about the article, but I don't know if we've reached that point yet. Linda?
Um, yes, I think we've reached that point.
Then I would like to say something before we vote on this article. I'm going to vote yes, but I don't want my yes vote to be taken for full throated approval. I'm very disappointed by the MBTA community zoning we've produced. It follows the letter of the law using sub districts where this zoning change will most likely produce little, if any multi family housing for years or even decades. Now, I do note the odd coincidence that just as we're putting forth this MDA community zoning article, we have separately, we, the town of Concord has separately received two 40B applications. And because three quarters of 40B apartments could be market rate, 40B projects may actually create some of the multifamily housing that we so desperately need for our seniors, our workforce and our grown children who would like to settle in Concord. But people who don't qualify for capital A affordable housing. Disappointed though I am, I will vote in support of this article. I will view it as a first step, even as we absorb our new 40B housing. We, we need though to continue to work on expanding our MBTA communities overlay district to allow for more modest sized, mid price and sustainable housing options. So thank you for letting me put that out there before we vote.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the board? Are there comments on the article from the public? I see Keith Bergman.
Hi, Keith Bergman, 56 White Avenue, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. At your meeting last week, there was some discussion about what this has to do with the inclusionary zoning by law provisions, 10%, 15% and 20%. And there were questions last time about what the, what was going to be the subject of the the economic feasibility analysis. It's, it's this by law that you vote on now goes forward for review and, and, and that analysis is able to do 10, look at 15% and 20% is, is that correct?
Yes, I confirmed with the the consultant that the review, the economic feasibility analysis will review both a threshold of 10 and 20 units at both 15 and 20%.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Okay.
Oops. Thanks, Keith. Are there any additional comments from the public? Seeing none, then I will poll the members. Rob Almeida?
Yes.
Andrew Boardman?
Uh, Linda, can I actually you can?
A motion?
Well, you can either individually make a motion for each of the warrant articles or you can wait till the end and make one motion to put forth the four warrant articles as amended and discussed this evening.
Okay, well. I guess if people are interested in all four, they'll just have to wait till the end. That's okay. That's fine. Say was a couple of minutes here.
We'll, we'll go for the
Okay, let's go to
One. So this is the, the housekeeping warrant article with comments from town council. Sue did provide a couple of other edits, but I will just.
Yeah, before you go too far, Elizabeth, there were some things left open by town council. Christina had a couple of questions that she didn't. There wasn't an answer to, and I found that Mina had deleted a few things that I, in some cases I thought he had mistakenly deleted them. We can go through this, but I wonder if we need to hold it until we can look at those outstanding items in, in greater detail.
Okay. The, the only outstanding item that I'm aware of and I, I think the latest version I sent you. The town council did. Christina's comment did get removed. I don't know which it's. Not sure. Not sure where it is. It wasn't that far. So the board can postpone this until January, January 2nd, if you wish. Or we can try and go through these quickly. And, and I, I think if something requires extended conversation, then it's not a housekeeping article and it should be just deleted from this warrant article. If, if there's a difference of opinion and how something gets interpreted, then it's not, in my view, a housekeeping amendment.
Okay, yes. And I saw that there were some things with a difference of opinion where clearly that means we have to reject them from this article, but there was there were changes where I couldn't tell why they had been rejected and, and then changes I made that in, in the last, what, two, three, four hours that I wonder if somebody else, well, we could look at them right now, but okay, well, why don't we start at the top? And if we see a problem, then we can stop?
I think, I think people are gonna freak when they read this, because there's so much involved in it. I mean, it's really, I know it doesn't mean a lot from a substantive point of view, but I don't, I think people are gonna be unhappy when they read this article.
Well, I'm hoping it goes on the consent calendar, but Mark, are you saying then that we can never change errors in the zoning by law or we can only change one error per year?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying there's a lot, there's a lot going on here, even some of the things that aren't being changed. I think people are gonna, you know, want to talk about. I would love to see this go on the consent calendar. I think that would be huge.
How about, how about if I don't, I don't think anybody has any comments about?
Yeah, go ahead.
The opening paragraph.
You go ahead.
So I'm just gonna make those changes. Town council, I agree, it's the town of Concord, it's the board of appeals and that's the board and that's what's in the charter. And then I think Sue, you know, it is.
Yeah, I agreed with Mina's comment there, so we can go deletion there. So that can just go, we're gonna have to do some cleanup on the white space and get rid of bullets, but we'll deal with that. Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with the, the format does, the format of the warrant article doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Unless it's a number or a letter.
Right. So you can resolve that comment in the right hand margin if you want.
Yep, I will. You know, purpose. Christina caught this one. I right, I, I thought that wasn't, I thought that was a spelling error that the town clerk could fix, but the, the H got left off and I, and I I actually don't think this one needs to even be here because the zoning by law does allow the town clerk to make obvious spelling errors and it is obvious that it's not supposed to be he purpose of the regulation. So I think this one can be deleted anyways.
I'm willing to, well, the more stuff we can leave out of this, the less daunting it will be.
Fine. I don't think anybody has any issues with this section.
All right. So here, what I think, we had some there's ongoing conversation between Mina and me about whether it's district or districts a possible in with the S in print. So let's not do that part. Let's just do the part where we change applicable to affected and otherwise leave it the same. Excuse me, affected to applicable.
Okay.
And we're gonna have to mess around with the highlighting there.
Yeah, that's, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, 4.2.7. Why? Oh, you're right. I really don't understand why Mina deleted the edit to 4.2.7. I think you read it wrong. But we're down to the wire here. And if the answer is, I'm just gonna have to put this in next year's warrant article, so be it.
There you go. I don't think. So.
Christina made this much more substantial. Something went horribly wrong with the formatting here because it's got spirals and singulars.
I'm, I'm recommending that we just delete this.
Wait, wait a second, hold on. The whole purpose of modifying 4.7.1 is that it currently says are expressly prohibited in all zoning districts of the town in two different places in the paragraph. One of them is just randomly inserted in the middle of the paragraph for no discernible reason. If we do we could get rid of all the things about the S's and the, and so forth.
Just delete this. Just delete this second are expressly prohibited.
Yeah, the one that's in the middle of the paragraph. We could leave everything else the same as long as we get rid of that. And there have been horrible problems with formatting this because it's so confusing. Right. So now we just okay, I now I'm looking at the exact language in the zoning by law. Uh, this is 4.7.1. 4.7.1, 4.7.1. Sorry, everybody. This was done before. Now it's undone. Okay, right. So it should read including non operable automobiles, closed parenthesis, and then we just want to delete are expressly prohibited in all zoning districts of the town as are and replace that, those words with a comma.
And you want a comma there?
Okay. So, so see after the closed parenthesis there, see that comma? That is actually an inserted comma. That's new. It wasn't previously in the zoning by law. So it needs to be bold and italic. And then we want to delete are expressly prohibited in all zoning districts of the town as are. And we don't want to touch trailer without a valid registration. We just want to leave that alone. It was already there. So we want to ungray trailer without a valid registration.
At this point, this is too much conversation for me and I'm, I'm I am not gonna recommend that we try and do this.
This year? Okay, then we will continue to say are expressly prohibited in all zoning districts of the town twice in this paragraph with a random addition.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
It, it is not a housekeeping thing if we're having a 10 minute conversation about how to amend this.
I already did it. Mina screwed it up.
I know. Well.
Maybe it was Christina. Okay. All right, we're gonna have to delete the next one, 4.7.2, because again, town council misunderstood and edited to be incorrect. So we will have to do this another year. You know, we might have to delete the table one, one again, because town council also didn't understand that edit. Very hard to do this stuff. I guess the, the moral of the story is don't start in the beginning of December. I mean, I started over a year ago, but.
Okay. So town council got rid of the next two.
Yeah. Can I point to the second ones arguably substantive? This means that we will only allow vehicles that have a wheelbase of exactly 172 inches. If they have 171 inches, they're not allowed.
I doubt it would be interpreted that way, but we can correct that later as well. I doubt it would be interpreted that way, but we can correct that later as well. Um, I don't think anybody has a problem with that one. Well.
Yeah, I also don't understand why Mina deleted this, but since.
Well, and then these were pretty, um, pretty minor. Minor. Percent. For getting rid of the percent.
Wait a second. These are new comments from town council that I've never seen.
They, this is what I, I.
You sent this to me, then I'm having a problem with Microsoft Word, not for the first time. Failing to display all comments.
So I am, um, so if town council puts a, an opinion out that. A proposal changes the meaning, um, then I'm going to, um, just.
Yep, delete it.
Not them. Where did I go?
Wait a second, okay, we need to fix that one up. Uh, uh, the one about. It, we just scrolled. Not this one, uh, that's okay, um. Must run further down. Ah, yes, in seven point six point four point two. We had better delete that one because there is some confusion about which word is getting changed. Okay.
Um, division of extra does. Um. You know, agreed that that was not a housekeeping item.
Wait a second. Oh, but he left the part about off-street, okay, great.
We'll fix that one, uh, relief from parking.
Right, so, um, what Mina said, we can get rid of that. All right, here I changed the for, the formatting because, um. We're getting rid of hyphens and it was too hard to see the hyphens we were getting rid of.
Right.
So all I did was write out more words, right, and this is something. Um, Elizabeth, the X that I thought you had previously fixed in the forthcoming twenty twenty-three zoning bylaw.
That doesn't need to be there.
Yeah.
That was already corrected.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I didn't change the sense of this, but I did change the formatting of the fourteen-foot height part.
Um. You were. Spaces, not signs. Um.
Okay, uh, could you scroll up that, to that thing about the comma? What, what, what? Uh, it was just above here, just above here. There, why did Christina delete the comma? On grounds that it's a substantive change? I guess we need, we should restore the comma. After replaced, because we shouldn't make that change without discussion. I think I deleted her deleting it, so if you just. Accept that, it should be okay. Oh, nope, we need the comma back. Sorry, there's supposed to be a comma after replaced. I'll just check that, seven, seven, three, twelve. Seven, three, twelve. Seven, three. Twelve. Cleaned or replaced? Wait a second. Nope, I'm wrong. It's supposed to not have a comma. Hey. That's the way it's currently in the zoning bylaw, so we don't want to insert a comma because that would be a change. All right.
Okay. Um.
Apparently Mina thinks that's substantive, so we're getting rid of it. He didn't say what. But that must be the reason. Do we have to, um, get rid of this fix in seven, eight, four, two, because there's been too much confusion about what the fix is?
I definitely think there's too much, um, going on to fix this.
Wait a second, no, the one in K is all right. It's the one in L, which I don't even know why that got deleted, and the one J that needs to get deleted.
I don't even know what's in that one.
Uh, what's wrong with N? I don't see any comments. On N, it's the one on L, it's L that needs to.
Hey. I don't, I don't see a change in P.
Uh, in P? No, I thought there is, yeah. And by the way, this gray, um, background highlighting is brilliant.
As long as I get it right. Um. So, uh, probably that one. The rest of these, I think, uh.
Let us get, hold on, let us get rid of the change in nine, four, three, two, because there's some question about. What to do about that colon. Kim changed it to a semicolon, but that's wrong. I think we should just leave the colon. We could leave a colon, but get rid of getting rid of the comma. I mean, keep getting, keep the comma. And then get rid of the. Um, the semicolon.
So it should be a colon.
It was originally a colon and it's not bad as a colon, in fact. But see how there's a colon there? Okay, beautiful. All right. I agreed with Mina that it would be a cleaner edit to remove the phrase by board, but he had forget, failed to put it in and strike out. Or, or he had put it in as by the board, whereas the actual thing to get struck is by board.
Okay.
Wait a second.
No, no, I'll, I'll fix it, Scoop, just give you.
Okay. Hey. Okay, so we should get rid of the change to seven, to ten, two, nine, one, because it might be substantive. At which point it's not worth making the change to ten. It's in B because it's just not that important. Mina said that was okay.
Um, I.
But if you want to delete it.
If he says I would avoid.
I wasn't sure what he meant he would avoid, but wait a second, the problem is actually not in this one, it's the previous one. The, it's, he was talking about C, not E.
Oh, up here.
Yeah.
So, not do this one.
Yeah.
Sorry, can I, can I interject for just a moment? Um. It feel, is there, are we trying to get this done? This particular one done tonight?
Um.
For any particular reason other than we just want to get them all? It feels like it still needs a lot of tweaking. Just in the, in terms of the edit, I, I just can't tell how much more. Was that the end of it?
Um, yeah, you're, you're almost at the end.
Okay, sorry, I saw, I see the cursor on the side of looking like it's halfway through and I'm like, if we're only halfway through this, then we should.
Oh, no, the cursor on the side you're seeing is the one for the zoom window, not the one for the window.
We can power through.
You're, 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 you're almost done.
Okay.
Um. So I, at this point. All of these. Are minor edits, no comments. And then this article addresses spelling errors, unclear phrasing, out-of-date references, and naming conventions, and that's the explanation that. Um.
Yeah, great explanation, short but sweet.
So, so that. That is it.
Okay, do you want to accept that change of the explanation? Great.
Um. So if, if the boards. What I would, um, suggest is that the board, um. Move to put forth, listen, you know, the, the four warrant articles as amended. Um, with corrections to the housekeeping article to, um, format. Um, and I can make all the, the right format changes as far as the bold and highlighting and all of that. Um, I can have, um, Sue review it and, um. Next week, we can actually, you know, submit it to, for, um, the warrant, if that's acceptable to the board.
Well, it worked for me.
Um, any discussion? So.
Perfect. Um, there were no other changes to the floodplain or?
Or the, um, two, the duplex. Okay, two family, okay.
Um, but I can, I can bring them up quickly if the board wants to just.
No, I, I think that's, I think that's fine unless anyone. Would wish to see them. Okay, so. Um. Shall we take a roll call vote now?
Can I ask a question?
Or, yes, please.
Sorry, so you're gonna send us the revisions you just did on that. Warrant article, correct, but we're gonna vote this evening on it based upon what we just saw. Is that correct?
Um. Yes, um, or I can make the changes and the board can, um, quickly meet January second.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I, I don't mind approving it based upon what we saw, what. I want to make sure I see a copy of it after the revisions are all done, that's all, okay, I'm.
And, and. And all board members would be looking at would be to make sure with the, the, the gray, the gray highlight, the bold italics. You know, all of those items are, you know, format-wise, if what matters is acceptable.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But, um.
All right, Linda.
No, no worries, general, generally, it's a, um. Motion is to move to, um, put forth the four warrant articles as amended. Um, and or presented and amended, um. Tonight. And.
So. I, I make a motion that we put forward the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting, the four warrant articles we have discussed this evening. The MBTA communities, the floodplain conservatory district, the housekeeping, and the two-family residents B as amended.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, then I will take a roll call vote. Um, Rob Almeida?
Yes.
Sue Felshen?
Aye.
Abby Flanagan?
Aye.
See, what I've forgotten.
The.
Andrew Boardman?
Yes.
Mark Giddings?
Yes.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes. Did I forget anyone? No. Okay. Onward. Um. So now town planner updates, liaison reports, any comments from Elizabeth?
Um, I only have one, a quick update, Linda and Mark heard this before everybody got on. Uh, one of the, um, town's GIS analysts, Tristan Boyd and I, uh, went to the sixth grade middle school. Um, at, um, Peabody and did a presentation on. Um, I did land use as far as regulations, zoning, the envisioned comfort plan, um, the wetlands bylaw. And, um, Tristan gave a presentation on land use and mapping and. Um, because the three social studies teachers have, are doing a combined. Um, class project of the sixth graders are looking at the Peabody School. On the uses, land use discussions and regulations and coming up with ideas for the future use of the school. Um, so it, uh, it was, it was pretty exciting, um, and, uh. I, I was, I was a little sad. One of the questions, um, asked was, um, whether, um. Any, um, of the adults would even bother, um, listening to or looking at, uh, what the class comes up with. And, um, so. Um, that was a little disheartening, so my response.
Elizabeth, then please say that the planning board would very much appreciate. That when the class is done, that they could, um, provide us with a presentation.
I, I will put that out there, definitely, but, um, I did, you know, talk about. How, you know, there would be a, a very, you know. Full town-wide conversation about the reuse and, um, not the kids. You know, while they can't go to town meeting and vote, um, they can, they can be active participants in the conversation and make their parents aware of. You know, what they're doing and wanting to be part of that conversation and. Um, you know, because there's gonna be a lot of public discussion about the reuse of the property and. Um, they can all be, you know, active participants in that and make sure their parents are aware of. You know, of that interest, so, um, but, so it was pretty cool, I have to say.
That's great. Um, one thing I wanted to mention, I have a cold, which is. I guess why we're all virtual, but I'm not going to be able to attend the chair's breakfast. Um, I know it's very last minute and it is, um. Only in person, so if there's anyone who has an interest in going, please. Let me know right now, other. let me know right now, otherwise, um, we'll, we'll just have to pass. I'm, I'm not sure that they'll have a great turnout, um, given the, the season, but, um, seeing no hands, I guess we'll just-
Is, is that Saturday morning or what?
No, no, it's tomorrow.
Oh, oh, tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow at eight, eight, eight o'clock at, at the townhouse.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
Not raising my hand, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine, it's fine.
Linda, I can do it. I've, I've been to it before, so I can do it.
Oh, that would be excellent. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Okay. And then, um, moving on, I see that, um, are we talking about the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule, Elizabeth?
Yes, very quickly. Um, I'm going to share my screen. Um, so what we did not have on our calendar, uh, when the board looked at, um, this is twenty twenty-four is quite an active election year with the town election, the, um, presidential primary, the state primary, and then the November election, and two elections were not on the calendar, one being, uh, March fifth. Um, so after talking with the town clerk, um, the planning board can move to the fourth, um, or the sixth. But it is, um, that it is, you know, the town clerk's feeling that, um, there, there should be no public meetings, um, on election nights. So that's two options, and then the other one was September third, um, which is the, um, I believe that's the state primary, um, and September is much more open. So you could do back-to-back, or you could move your reading on the third, like, Thursday, the fifth.
Okay, um, should we make the changes now, or do you want to just, um, send around a, um?
I would like, I would like to at least change March, because, um-
Sure, I don't think we want to conflict with the select board, I, I think, um, but the HDC, I think, would be more understanding. Um, does anyone have a view?
Or an issue with meeting Wednesday nights instead?
I'm good.
The Wednesday night, are there overlaps?
Good with me.
No, that should be fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and if you want, want to go out to September, um-
You can move it to Thursday so that you're not doing, you know, back-to-back meetings.
We won't run into trouble with, um, uh, Rosh Hashanah or Yom Kippur, will we?
In September?
Oh, the calendar keeps shifting. I've lost track.
Uh, I don't see it on my calendar.
Excellent.
I think Thursday makes more sense.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then minutes, um, are there any comments? They've been circulated and edited, I think.
Um, yes.
Could we hear, um, uh, like, I guess I can just make a motion that we approve the minutes of, is it October tenth, October twenty-fourth, and November fourteenth?
Second.
Okay. Um, Mark Giddings?
Yes.
Rob Almeida?
Yes.
Sue Felshen?
Aye.
Abby Flanagan?
Aye.
Andrew Boardman?
Yes.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes. And with that, um, I'll say happy holidays to all, have a great new year, and, um, we'll see you.
And congrats, Elizabeth, on all the hard work getting those warrant articles.
Yes.
In the shape that they are. That took a percolating effort, and I'm happy we can wrap that up as a Christmas present for you today.
It's all good.
All right, we'll deck, deck the halls.
Feel better, Linda.
Everyone.